Will you lead us in our implication?
Yes, sir.
Please pray with me. Dear heavenly Father God, we love you. God, we just praise your name for all things. We thank you for the many blessings. God, we thank you for the fall weather. Thank you for the change in the colors. God, we just thank you that it is a reminder that, Lord, you are in control of all things. God, we ask for wisdom tonight. We ask for guidance for those making decisions. Lord, we just ask for continued safety for our first responders, Lord. We just thank you for this community and ask you to just continue to keep your care over it. Lord, we love you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Samantha, you going to lead us in our pledge tonight?
Pledge to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead. Convene our meeting tonight. We'll start with a roll call. Ms. Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upton.
Here.
Jan Throgmorden.
Here.
Marty Lindenberg.
Here.
John Collins.
Here.
Dana McKnight.
Here.
Don Rollins is absent. Jimmy Conduff.
Here.
City Attorney and the City Clerk are both present. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made to the agenda as it was mailed? Do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the agenda as mailed. All those in favor, yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from our October 12th, 2021 regular meeting. Do we have any changes to those?
One small typo.
Okay.
It's the, one, two, three, fourth paragraph down to approve the agenda. It should have been to approve the minutes as written. Approval of minutes from September 14th.
Got it. Any other changes? Do we have a motion?
I'll make it. That we accepted it with the change. Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Uh, next is our public forum. In which we, uh, every month we meet here and we invite the public to come and speak to us and let us know, uh, what you think about the job we're doing or what direction you would like to see us moving. So, in the public forum, we do limit it to two minutes apiece. We are going to talk about an RV planning, an RV conditional use permit a little bit later in the agenda. I'm guessing that many of you are here for that tonight. And I would, just before we open the public forum, I just want to thank you for coming. I would like to see this amount of people every, uh, second Tuesday of the month at 6:30. So, with that, I'll, uh, open the public forum. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on something other than the conditional use permit? No? Okay. We'll close the public forum and move on with the agenda. Uh, up first, we have Mr. Wayne, Wayne Mays from Heartland Advanced Medical Manufacturing, the regional cluster. He's going to present on the Heartland Regional Cluster.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Wayne.
I am Wayne Mays. Uh, I work for the Fayetteville Chamber of Commerce. Uh, this is the third time my wife and I have lived in Fayetteville and met up one of my old favorite, uh, favorite church members here a minute ago. And we're delighted to be here in retirement. But in retirement, uh, Fayetteville Chamber President Steve Clark asked me to work on a special project involving medical manufacturing. I am not going to be able to, I'm not going to need to take very long because I've left each of you council members with a five-page narrative and a brochure about this project. It's called Heartland Advanced Medical Manufacturing Regional Cluster. Steve Clark, uh, basically came up with this idea a couple of years ago because of the rapidly growing healthcare industry that we're experiencing in Northwest Arkansas. I know if y'all keeping up with the paper, uh, the news that you're aware of the growth of UAMS. We have the new UAMS Children's and we have the, uh, Northwest Medical is growing. The, uh, announcement recently by Alice Walton that she's going to start a whole health institute which will be focused on wealth, uh, well care as opposed to, uh, treating somebody once they're ill. So, we've always had the three-legged stool in Northwest Arkansas of retail and transportation. And, uh, let's see, retail, transportation, that's Tyson for retail, uh, Hunt for transportation, and, uh, I guess the other one would be what, Mayor?
Walmart.
Walmart, right. So, that, those three have been the three-legged stool and sometimes we tend to think that everything revolves around them. It doesn't really. But now that fourth leg could be, um, this healthcare, the healthcare industry. And, uh, in order to take advantage of that, as we looked and did some research, we found that very little medical manufacturing is done in Arkansas at all and practically none in Northwest Arkansas where we're all from. Now, I appreciate the fact that you folks are dedicating your part of your lives to serving the community here in West Fork as council members. But I know that one of the things you probably have uppermost in your mind besides the economy of the community is jobs for your young people coming out of West Fork High School. You have a good high school with a good reputation. And actually, that's true of several communities up and down Highway 62. So, we formed, uh, this corridor, or cluster we're calling it, basically along Highway 62. Again, uh, you council members can look at your map later and you'll see the corridor begins on the east at Elkins and goes all the way west to Talquah, Oklahoma. So, this is a two-state project, Arkansas, Oklahoma. It's three counties, Washington County, Arkansas, Adair and Cherokee Counties in Oklahoma. You will also be aware, if you've lived in this area very long, that those two counties in Oklahoma are two of the 12 counties that comprise the Cherokee Nation. So, immediately after getting this program organized, we attracted four members. Fayetteville Chamber Commerce on the east, Talquah Regional Development, uh, on the, uh, west. And then the City of Farmington. And the fourth member was the Cherokee Nation. So, about the last month, we've been operating with those four members. Just last night, the Stillwell, Oklahoma Council voted to join unanimously, I might add, to join. So, we now have seven members, uh, seven votes for communities, five communities that are involved. I was at Greendale last night, so gave them essentially the same pitch. What we'd like you to do is consider becoming a member of the Hammer City, the Heartland Advanced Medical Manufacturing Regional Cluster. Membership for a community involves a commitment, financial and land. The financial is a thousand dollars a month. The idea is for, within 36 months, we expect to be able to show some kind of progress and results. And if not, your community should not continue a membership. But we're not asking for a commitment of 36 months. We're asking a thousand a month. If you join, you may opt to leave the organization immediately. So, there's no penalty. There's no penalty with early withdrawal or any withdrawal. The bottom line is we either produce for you and you council members and the citizens here believe that we're getting your money's worth or you withdraw from the organization. The other requirement is five acres of buildable land. The reason for that is because you need to have skin in the game in order to attract manufacturing. You're going to need to have about five acres of buildable land and that means the utilities are out there. Water, electricity, sewer, wastewater, gas, et cetera. Part of what we intend to do as an organization is help you get that land buildable. You find the land inside city limits, outside in your planning zone or whatever. We would come in using some of the dues, some of the higher organization and some grant money to help you get the utilities out to your buildable land. There it is. They're straight in numbers. Most of the communities in Northwest Arkansas of your size do not have the budget to do economic development. Seriously, in a serious way. Hire somebody that is experienced, that has full-time, the ability to travel around the country and the world looking for prospects. That's essentially what you'd be buying into if you become part of Hammer City. We'll be an organization of small communities like you. Uh, every mayor of the community, this member has his feet under the table, able to make decisions, and we'll do joint marketing. So, we've already had a couple of prospects. One that makes digital thermometers and another one that makes, uh, stethoscopes. They are interested. Most of the time, we find these companies are clustered on the east coast and the west coast. They have no idea how good it is here in the Heartland and West Fork, Arkansas, and up and down Highway 62. So, we're going to be able to convince them and show them how good it is here to live. We have a great quality of life. Everybody in the country can say that. What we do have is a, is a cost of living that is certainly less than the national average. I know y'all are aware of this, about 12%. So, somebody can move here from somewhere else in the country, east coast, west coast, take a 12% cut in salary and still have the same quality of lives and standard of living that they have where they are now. And I might add, not nearly as much traffic. Although I did just come through Fayetteville, so it's a little hard for me to say that. The bottom line is I'm leaving you with these materials. I'd like you to look them over. We are dealing with the other communities up and down the corridor. Farmington's already joined, as I said. I'm talking to Prairie Grove and Lincoln. They seem to be the next, or, next communities that are, uh, just about ready to take a vote. I, I know that for the most part, uh, something like this takes a, a vote with the city council that you need time to think about and look it over. I'd be glad to come back and meet with the council or with any individual or group of individuals in the community. There's no pressure here other than the fact that we've applied for a federal grant which could bring a significant amount of money in for this organization to, to use to benefit the communities that are members. We get that grant, there's going to be, uh, money available for us to help you extend those utilities and do other things. Uh, however, the grant, we expect to hear about mid-December, the end of December. So, we're asking communities, if they want to join, to join by the end of December. The reason for that would be you would have a seat at the table. You'd have an opportunity to participate in the organization. But also, you would be a member when the grant was received, meaning you're able to participate fully in the distribution of the funds and the sharing of the funds, which would be equal. Sometime next year, we're going to apply for an even larger grant. So, you know, we, we have some big things on the horizon. I know that my time is up and I don't have time for questions and answers, Mayor. But as I've said and as I've offered, I'll come back and meet with any individual and any group and I'd be glad to do it. We're looking, folks, to help you find jobs for your West Fork High School graduates who can work with their hands, don't have to get a college degree, spend four years of your money to go to a nearby university, which of course is handy. But not everybody is cut out to go to college. The jobs we're talking about would be bringing in $25 to $35 an hour working with your hands assembling medical products. We think they would be good jobs and we think they would allow you to maintain, keep your high school graduates here. Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
All right, so if everyone would, I would appreciate it if you would look that over and, uh, perhaps next meeting, we can have a discussion, um, on this, on this, uh, proposal. All right, next is our business reports. First up, Planning Commission, Walter Harnish.
Good evening. Uh, so we've had three meetings since I last spoke to you. Uh, October 20th, we had a special meeting with Juliette Garber, Juliette Ritchie with Garber. And, uh, we further refined down the zones in agricultural, residential estate, R1, or single-family, R1. We now have a mixed-use neighborhood, one, and a mixed-use neighborhood, two. Basically, that's just, um, the, uh, density of it. There's just a little bit difference in density of those. Uh, general commercial. And there was a town center, uh, zone created that, to kind of protect here just the court building and little lot brief for the most part. We didn't get to multifamily. That was for our next one. But then on October 21st, we had our regular meeting and it was pretty simple. We had a lot line adjustment. It was pretty straightforward. Uh, we had approved a preliminary plat, but with a condition on the larger map zoomed out to show all of Hidden Creek and adjacent property. I don't know if we got that yet or not.
I'm aware of it.
Okay, so we'll see. And then the conditional use permit, we discussed that and we'll be getting into that here in a minute, I imagine. And then November 4th is our, or other, special meeting and we got into multifamily, the R3 district. And we're still kind of debating over whether we want to keep that or not. Then we were presented with the new schedule of uses and it was combined down to two pages. There was a, a good discussion on whether or not that was even a great, good thing or not. But seemed, and that was it for our meetings. They were, it took some time, but they were pretty, pretty, uh, impactful, I guess.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions for Walter? So Walter, you say, uh, Planning Commission is working on a complete overhaul of our planning documents. Is that right?
Just Title 14.
Title 14. So, the, the entire zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Guys, we need public input on that. That, that is, it's going to be crucial that we have citizens' input on that. It's a complete rewrite of our zoning ordinance. It's needed. What we're working on most of, most recent thing in what, what we currently have is 1999. We need your input at those planning meetings. They are the third Thursday of each month at 6:30, right here.
And our next special meeting, we're, we're actually discussing this as the whole point of the meeting is, was there was the, the ninth, wasn't it? Or no? December, yeah. When did we? I'm forgetting what day we decided on. Goodness gracious, I'll have to go back and look at the minutes.
It's the 25th, I believe.
The 20th.
Not my other commission. Not my other commission. It's not on my calendar. Thank you.
Ninth of December.
Ninth of December. Sixth, and here is the next meeting with Juliette Ritchie.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you, sir. Thank, uh, thank the Planning Commission for what you've put into this conditional use permit. Okay. Uh, next is our court report. Tracy? She's not here. Okay. Uh, so, uh, everyone has the court report in their packet. It was a good report this month. Disbursements were up. It was encouraging to see, um, the activities, uh, have remained high this year. As everyone knows, last year during COVID, um, a lot of the agencies started reducing the amount of tickets they wrote, uh, the amount of stops they made. So, Arkansas State Police has started sending tickets off of Interstate 49 back to the courts. So, um, everything has kind of come back to normal this year. We're starting to, to see those activities come back to where we expected them to be. Uh, next is our library report. Blair.
So, October was a very busy month for the library. Um, this month, we've had 28 new library card signups. That is the most we've had in a single month this year so far. And we've also added 129 new items to our collection. Um, and we've had over 3,000 checkouts for the month of October. Um, that's another record breaker for the year. And then finally, database and ebook usage has been the highest that it's been. Uh, we're almost at 400 logins for the month of October. This, I'm really, I'm especially happy to see this, um, because the library has access to really fantastic databases through the Arkansas State Library, all for free. Um, some of my favorites are ProQuest. Um, ProQuest has a career and technical education database. And this is the best source for vocational education. And so, if you are, it's got 600 titles. So, you know, if you're a welder, an auto mechanic, um, you work in any of the trades, this is the database for you. And we also have access to the ABI INFORM database. Um, that is the international industry reports, businesses, business trends, um, company and commodity reports. It's also got access to, um, The Economist. So, if you're interested, if you want to read The Economist, you can do that for free uh, with your library card. Um, also, this month is Native American History Month, so we have a display at the library. Um, and we also have two new sections. We have two new Arkansas sections. So, up at the front, another desk, you'll notice that we have, um, an area for all local authors, um, and Arkansas authors. And then in nonfiction, we have a new Arkansas and regional history, Ozarks, that kind of thing. Um, it has the same area now. So, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Blair? No? So, I'll just point out real quick, um, to date this year, we've had, uh, over 25,000 items checked out of the library, out of the West Fork Library. That's, that's amazing, Blair. Almost 9,000 people have, have went inside the library this year. Uh, that's, that's a lot for a small town like ours. So, Blair, you're doing a great job. I appreciate that. That's my wife in the corner. If you want to go ahead and hit her up for that late library book.
She's going to come to meetings.
That's the idea, sir. All right. Uh, next is our police report. Chief Nelson.
I don't have a lot to cover. I'll keep it pretty short. I know you guys got a lot to discuss. Further on, we had, uh, 404 cita, or calls for service, 124 citations, 86 warnings. And it's 52 warrants that were served. Good news for us, the jail is opening back up. So, they're taking some inmates they weren't normally taking. So, that'll make our, our job a lot easier. One thing I did want to mention, we had the, uh, Kiss the Pig event. The day before, and I apologize for the people that really wanted to see a policeman kiss a real pig. The day before, the pig that they, that they had scheduled, uh, actually bit somebody. We didn't get to use that pig. And we had no officers that wanted to kiss the pig. The pig that actually showed up was the Razorback mascot. And just to show you how policemen are, we had three or four officers kiss the pig. So, it totally flopped.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any questions for me on this, Mark?
Any questions for Chief Nelson?
Oh.
Go ahead.
I did mention, we did apply for a grant for, uh, $39,000. We kind of went big with this one. Uh, the, I believe it's the Attorney General lets go of some money. We put in for, uh, new body cameras and new in-car cameras that would actually download from wifi. If we get it, we get it, that's great. But I kind of shot for the moon on this one. We lowballed or we went real low on, uh, computers. We put in for about $9,000. We got it and then we turned around, talked to Greendale, they put in for $20,000, got it. So, this time, we're just going to go for it and get whatever we can get and see what happens. So.
So, Chief, um, I was fortunate enough to do a ride-along with Officer Riley, um, over the weekend.
Yes.
Um, and I'm glad we've got a crowd tonight, so I can talk about this. So, anyone who has not rode along with one of our officers, I know this is a headache for you, sir, but, um, I'm telling you, that is, that is worth your time to see what our officers are doing in town. It, it's far more than writing tickets. I, my heart has been broke ever since I done it. Uh, some of the stuff that I seen in our town that we look past, uh, we don't see it every day. Uh, and I'm telling you, those officers are seeing it every day. And it is not, it is not the West Fork that 90% of us in this room think it is. There's a lot going on out there. There's a lot of hurt, there's a lot of pain that those officers are dealing with. And, and they're busy. Uh, I, I rode on a Sunday. Uh, Officer Riley said he picked me up at 11, dropped me off in an hour or so. I got back home about 3 o'clock. Uh, we'd spent 45 minutes at the jail dropping somebody off. Uh, we stopped an older gentleman who, uh, had some trouble navigating the, the intersection. When we realized that it was an older gentleman, Officer Riley, uh, went out of his way to make sure that, that he just made a mistake, that he wasn't having a, a greater issue. But there is, Officer Goggins, you've talked about this several times. Uh, you've been a part of it, I know that. But our officers really have a heart for this community and some of the work they're doing. You'll never, you'll never realize it until you go ride around with one of them for an hour. It's so much more than, than the nonsense that gets blown up on Facebook.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
I'm, I'm a better person for riding around and seeing what's going on in this, in this town. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for the work you do, too. Uh, next, Public Works, Isaac Carter Center.
I'll keep mine relatively short as well. We spent the last couple of weeks, uh, installing the new meters that we've got. It's been kind of a slow process. Had one out on vacation and I got to take my vacation, send it home. So, uh, we've kind of put that on the back burner. We're trying to tie all the services over at the school right now, uh, to get that line, the old line killed out because it's still tied, tied in and we're still getting eye on that. The one thing, uh, James Place did get paved today. They were paving it when I went by there about 5:30, so, I did not get the chance to drive down there and look at it, but they were, they were still out there. I'm going to let Nick give you guys an update on the big project. We're nearing the end of that. He can kind of fill you all in. We've just got some bits and pieces and, and then that thing will be, that part will be done and rehab all, all that's, all that's left, so.
Okay.
If y'all have any questions for me, fire away.
Go ahead.
Um, like the water loss for the year was 37.32. What, what was so much, do you think, last month?
We haven't got water loss for last month, but it's going to be, it's going to be rough. Uh, we've had some big breaks this year. We really have. Our water losses stayed up quite a bit through the year, so. But yeah, we've had some, we've had some good-sized breaks down McKnight.
Had a real good one on McKnight.
Yeah. Back-to-back.
Yeah.
So, we've had a couple over on Centennial as well, so it, it, it don't take a whole lot to, to drive it up. And, and we have had a busy year this year. We fixed, we fixed a lot of leaks. More than we've had since I've been here. I think our average, we was averaging around 28 or so. I know when the mayor and I sat down with Washington Water Authority, they're like, well, that's nothing. Yeah, I think, I think them and Fayetteville are running like 45. Fayetteville's running like 47% right now, so. So, I think it's been a bad year for everybody on the water loss. We're hoping that the, the new meters on this side of town helps drive that back down, so.
Do we have all those put in yet?
No. We got about one, I think Amanda said like 160 we've put in, so. But we've, we've knocked out all the easy ones. Now, it's the hard ones, so. Yeah, it's kind of a process.
How many, how many you got?
500. I think there's like 385, Kristin, I don't know. But I think 385 on this side of town. So, so we'll have a few that we're going to put, you know, Mineral Springs, about that way.
Okay.
And you said something about a shut-off valve that you were thinking on that side of the town. Have you done that?
No.
What was more on that?
We're trying to plan that around Thanksgiving when school will be out, so we can shut the school out of water, so. So, uh, yes, we're going to do that during the holidays. We're actually going to cut two in. Probably one right there at, at the school drive-in by Fochman and then one on down closer to Kelly.
That's a perfect idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, around Thanksgiving.
Well, no, I just, I just. No, I just, for all the people, when they, when everything goes off, it would, it'd be easier to just, not everybody getting it.
Yeah, we're planning around a winter storm too, y'all. But I'll let Nick give you all that.
Okay.
On the big project.
All right, I'll be quick, too. Um, you know, on the, on the overall project, we're really just finalizing the punch list items. The, the main thing we have is just, uh, The main thing we have is just, uh, the manholes that were coated with epoxy to protect from, from corrosion. I think we, we worked out last week at the meeting how we're gonna resolve checking that, that coating thickness since it was, you know, installed and then placed into service and the test method that we would have originally done isn't, isn't gonna work very well when the lines are in service. So we've, we've found a method of, of checking the thickness while it's in service and we're working out a deal with the contractor to go out and do that so we can check that off, off the list and then release just a couple other loose ends we have to tie down with the contractor and we can, we can close out that phase. Like Isaac said, we're finishing up the school area. I know it's a little bit of a mess over there by the playground, it, you know, we got digging through there and then it rained, of course, after it stayed dry forever, but, um, you know, at least we've got all the main lines in and we're getting service signs tied over like Isaac said, so we're, we're getting very close. I know it's been a long haul, but we're, we're nearing the end here and still, still trying to get some resolution there with the pond closure. Haven't heard anything from the state, we have submitted a request to extend dates out and they haven't responded to us and we're, I think, getting close to moving forward with a new plan to finish cleaning out the ponds with White, getting the White River thing resolved, so. Anyways, y'all have any questions?
Questions for Nick?
Thanks.
Thank you, Nick. Next. Parks report, Chad.
So the Parks Committee hasn't met since the last council meeting, so I don't have, I didn't have any minutes to put in your packet. We're planning to meet later this month or the first of December. It's kind of hard right now with the holidays and stuff coming up, but. I'll try to keep it quick as well. Our biggest focus has been getting our site prepped for our bike pedestrian trail. We've been working hard on that and construction has begun. It actually began about a week or ten days ago, but then the rains came, slowed it down, but it kind of halted, but they've been back after it, uh, really hard last couple of days and they're planning to lay asphalt to actually lay the trail tomorrow. Uh, it'll be a little bit before it's actually open, but after tomorrow, you definitely can go down and walk on it and use it. We still gotta stripe it and get some signage up and things like that, I feel real excited about that. I have some pictures on my phone, I was gonna try to get those on something to present them so y'all could see some of the progress and, and things, but I didn't get that done today, so, but if you wanna look at them, come see me, I've got them on my phone, it's starting to look really good, but. Proud of that and hopefully it'll be ready to go and completely done soon. Other than that, we've just been doing some off-season, continue to do some off-season work on our fields, our disc golf course, Riverside Park, just maintenance there. I do want to remind you, we do have a disc golf tournament coming up December eleventh, registration for that is open if anyone's interested. It's, uh, you can go to discgolfscene.com and register for that and it's a lot of fun. We're excited about that. We have started working and getting our preparations on our Christmas lights and decorations. With the help of Isaac's crew, we should be putting those up, we should get those all ready and put those up right before Thanksgiving sometime.
Flags are up?
Yes, we did get flags up, uh, this week, end of last week, we got those up for Veterans Day. And they'll remain up until we put the Christmas lights up. Also, and then the last thing I do, we have started preparation for baseball and softball season already. I have a WCCL board meeting tomorrow night to begin league preparations as well. Believe it or not, we'll be doing sign-ups in six, seven weeks, so. It seems like we just ended, but fixing it all, start over again, but anyway, that's all I've got. Y'all have any questions or anything?
Any questions with Chad?
I just wanted to say that field that you guys had redone is amazing.
Yes, and there's some pictures of that too. I'm gonna gather some of the projects that we've, once we get them played out, I'm gonna put together something and get that out there and also plan on putting together some ideas and some of the projects that we got coming up that we're gonna be working on coming up in twenty twenty-two as well, so I'm hoping to put something together and get that out to the public as well and then maybe have something to present to y'all next month as well, some of those completed projects and future projects, got a lot of them.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, thank y'all.
Next, Fire Department, Chief Myers.
First of all, I say the police department has a do-over. When I lost, I had to kiss a real pig. I should have to have a do-over. Trick or treat, I thought we'd string them well, had a lot of folks, I wish we could have counted, but we didn't. Us, Police Department, parking wreck, was a great opportunity to do that. Up a little higher even than last month, last month was more than we've done in two years and we're up one more call than we had last month, eighty-six calls. Code drive still going on, very, very important. We've got quite a few so far, but it takes a lot to fill the need, not necessarily the numbers, but to have the numbers, to have the sizes that people need, so. Still very, very important, drop them off at the, uh, fire station anytime.
Is that any size, Chief?
Any size, any style, we don't.
Adult, child?
It doesn't matter, we'll take anything, because, and what we don't use, we always donate to other organizations to help in other towns, so. The only other thing I've got is on the parade, I guess, on, on the eighth of December, we were asked by the committee to do a chili supper fundraiser. We're not gonna do a chili supper fundraiser, we're going to make chili and just give it out for free, so. We just felt like that's our duty to do, so any women that wanna cook chili, you know, be, be with me. I may need to sample some first, but you know, other than that, other than that's all I got.
Chief, December sixth?
December eighth.
Eight, eight, no, December the sixth.
It's our Fire Department Christmas party.
And everybody needs to wear those.
I think Kirsty sent that email along, so.
Okay, yeah, she did, but we need numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Chief Myers? Thank you, sir. Next is our finance report, Christie.
Everybody else said they would be fast, so I'm gonna say that because I'm always fast. The budgets look really good. We are, um, our bank balances are up three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for the year. We are four hundred and sixty-three thousand under budget. All of our departments are coming in under budget except the Administration of Justice Fund, which is showing twenty-eight dollars over budget for the year. That may or may not work itself out, but twenty-eight dollars probably in the long run is not that bad. Our sales tax, um, between the city sales tax and the county sales tax actually went up just a little bit this month. I expect for the next couple of months for it to go up with the Christmas season. So I'm assuming that we'll probably end the year around nine percent up from where we were last year. The, I did highlight the water numbers for the sewer payments again, and this month, they were very good. We took in fifty-one thousand in income and, from sewer and our treatment cost to Fayetteville was only sixteen thousand. That's excellent. That was through October, we've had two months that that was the case, the other two, the other eight months, we would not have been able to make our bond payment. We did make our first bond payment November first. We have not heard from Arkansas Energy Resources yet about the, the funds for forgiveness that we've asked, or if that's the sixteenth or seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Is when they said we would hear about, so they're gonna wait till the last day to tell us, I guess, so. As soon as we get word on that, we will definitely let you guys know, we won't wait till next month to get that word out to you. The other thing, we, you have budget packets in front of you for our meeting next week. I had kind of held off on giving you those because we weren't sure about health insurance. The original rate that we got back was that we were gonna have a twenty percent increase. But they, our agent actually went out and sourced some other numbers for us, so we will be changing medical providers from United Healthcare to Blue Cross this year in order to keep our costs down. Those costs, depending on, there's, our employees right now have five choices of medical plans that they can choose from, we're gonna go down to two we have. And that's just to be able to go Blue Cross with Shield and keep those costs down so that we don't have to do major budget adjustments or look at the employees not having enough to cover their expenses, so. That's all I have.
Any questions for Christie? So Christie, I, uh, was looking at our numbers and, uh, our departments are four hundred and sixty thousand dollars under budget so far this year. Our sales tax is up a hundred and thirteen thousand. And so if you look at that as a percentage of one another, and this is just a shout out to all of our department heads who are monitoring their budgets, but that difference is made up of twenty-four percent of that is increased sales tax. Seventy-six percent of that is management of their budgets through the department head, so. Good job, you guys are doing really well with, with managing the budgets. And it's noticed, so. Anything else for Christie? Okay. All right, we don't have any old business, so we'll move into new business. Item one of new business is review a recommendation for RV park from Planning Commission. Walter, what recommendation does the Planning Commission have for this development?
We spent a lot of time discussing this and we did not, unfortunately, did not come to a consensus with the commission, but we did ultimately vote in a recommenda, recommending approval of the permit with five conditions. One is that RV spaces must remain permeable with the exceptions of being the ingress and egress to Highway seventy-one and the possible, or the easement onto Church Avenue. And second is that ingress and egress to Church Avenue is only available to emergency services, city vehicles and as well as pedestrian traffic. And then we had some concerns as to length of stay, how, so that it wasn't permanent. Uh, we got, came to a condition of that the maximum length of stay can be up to twenty percent of the spots of the RV spaces can be up to one year as long as those spaces do not, are not placed along the bluff that abuts Riverside Park. And fourth one was that the, and, and this was what the main, the main concern out of all of it was visuals to surrounding properties and so that natural screening at the property perimeters must be sufficient and appropriate to mask business operations. And those plantings cannot include invasive species in the state of Arkansas and/or the Ozark Mountain Range. And then again, to address possible visuals, we added a twenty-five foot minimum setback on the, all the residential portion of the lot. And those are our five conditions with our recommendation for approval.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So, we have a packed house tonight, I'm assuming a lot of people want to talk about this. So what we're gonna do is, uh, we're gonna talk about it. But this is gonna be different than the public hearing or the Planning Commission meeting. So we're not gonna have, there's gonna be a tennis match that we're watching, all comments or questions are gonna come through the council. Which, so, we're not talking back and forth. We're gonna start with the developer, the Berry's, and we're gonna allow them to give us a synopsis of the proposed development, any changes they may have made after the Planning Commission meeting. And then we'll allow West Fork citizen input. And again, that'll be through the council. Once we're finished with that, we'll open the floor and if there's someone here that's outside of the city limits that wants to speak on this, we'll hear you out. Uh, we are gonna limit, uh, comments to two minutes, uh, we got a lot of people in the room. And I'm gonna tell you right now, if, if we're, if we're hearing the same concerns over and over again, I'm gonna point that out to you that, that that's already been heard, okay? So we got a lot of people in the room, I'm fine with everybody speaking to us, I just don't wanna rehash the, the same concerns over and over, okay? So, and, I don't know who said that, but yes, all the council members were at the public hearing. We weren't all at the Planning Commission meeting, but all the council members were present at the public hearing, so. A little bit of an outline of what we're looking at here. What is the, we have, we have a whole book of code of what, of what this town has said permits a conditional use, okay? Mentioned earlier, that was voted on in nineteen ninety-nine, it's ordinance three twenty-eight. I hope everybody has read three twenty-eight and that we get some, some reference to, to those codes tonight. But ordinance three twenty-eight lays out what the conditions are for approving a conditional use. For the council tonight, specifically, we'll be looking at items G, but C, D and F may need attention as well. That's in that packet that was laid out on your table. We'll also be looking at the application of zoning district regulations, items B and C. The zoning districts involved, the character of those districts, the character of other uses in those districts. The RV definition in our zoning ordinance, and I've thrown in an extra definition because it was the only one I could find that mentioned the RV definition. So, the council has all that before them, all of that is available to everybody. You can stop in at the city and ask for any of that information. Last year, uh, we spent a lot of time and a lot of money making that public through our website, every ordinance we have, every set of minutes that we've ever taken is available through the website now. So we've tried to make it as easy and transparent as possible for everyone to stay informed. So a little bit of the procedure we're looking at tonight. The council's job, what you've elected this body for, is to make decisions based on this book of ordinances. We hear a lot about the good old boy system. The only way we get away from the good old boy system is we stick to the ordinances that have been approved, okay? So the council does not get the, they don't get the luxury of wanting something or not wanting something. Their job is to build on it based off of the ordinances that we have set before us. So, I've had, I've talked to many of you and, and something that's been brought up, well, you're not listening to the public. You're not listening to the public. And I assure you, we are, but the importance of your, your input tonight is to make sure we're aware of the concerns, liabilities, possible things we haven't think, thought about on this. It's not to, to, let's have fifty people show up and, and tell the council no, right? That's, that's not how government works. Government works by establishing a set of rules and ordinances and then electing a council that will follow those. So, that's why I, guys, for the last four years, I've been, every time somebody will listen to me, I need you at council meetings, I need you at planning meetings. That's where it's so important, so that we can get our rules to match what we, what we want. Obviously, what was, what was passed in nineteen ninety-nine may not be what we like today, but we gotta know that, right? Four years ago, we had another conditional use permit, we had a crowd, it was, it was larger than this, wasn't it, Steve? So we had a big crowd that night. And it was, it was the same thing, we had a lot of upset citizens. But what I can tell you is none of those citizens are here tonight. And I can also, um, pretty safely say none of you were at that meeting, right? So we've gotta get, we've gotta get involved more often than when it's in our backyard, it's what, that's what I'm begging you guys for. I want you at the meetings, I want your input, but it, we've gotta get it to change the code. It can't be to show up and try to, try to scare a council or a planning commission into voting, right? That's not, that's not, that's not the way we work. So, um, I just, I just wanna get all that out there and, and I hope tonight, I hope you guys have, have looked at the code. If, if you're in favor of this ordinance, that's great. If you're in favor of this ordinance with conditions, that's great. And, and I'm happy to hear the conditions that would make you in favor of it. But what I don't want is, if, if you're against it, there's no need for you to argue the conditions if you're still against it at the end of the night, right? So it's okay to tell us that you're against it and, and not argue for conditions, that's perfectly fine. So with that, a couple of things that have been, concerns that have been voiced already, so this body's already heard these concerns. That this proposal will diminish property values of the neighbors. That this proposal will increase trespassing with the neighbors that are close by. That this proposal will increase the density of the property nearby, um, much higher than what it currently is. That this proposal will increase runoff or pollution going into the river. There's been a, a large concern about traffic on Church Street, just an increase in traffic in general and a concern that large RVs can't make that turn. And then there's been the, um, the concern that it's gonna cause unsightliness, right? That, um, it's gonna be unsightly, it's not residential homes. So those are the things we've heard so far, uh, those are the, the items that the Planning Commission tried to address for you, okay? So we, you guys came, you said this, these are our concerns, and so they've tried to address those concerns with different, uh, topics. Now whether they've done a good job or not, that's, that's up for debate, but they have tried to address the concerns that have been listed. As Walter pointed out, they, they approved this, recommended approval with five conditions. And he read those conditions to you. There are a couple issues with the conditions and I'll throw that out to you, okay? And I'm not, I'm not trying to sway anybody one way or the other, I just want, I want us all on an even playing field because about every other phone call or email I've received on this, they've had an idea that's never been discussed, nobody's ever heard of it, I don't know where some of this is coming from, okay? But, uh, so, let's, let's talk about it. Ingress on, ingress and egress on Church Street, only used by emergency vehicles and city vehicles and pedestrians. Chances are, folks, if, if we, if we limit it to that, the Berry's are probably not gonna extend Church Street, they don't really. They don't really have a lot of of need for Church Street if if their if their business operations can't use it. And then we placed a a maximum length of stay for 20% of the vehicles for up to one year. Now, the way this is written, and I don't think this is the way the planning commission intentioned it, but essentially, in all the other spaces, you can stay 364 days, okay? But in 20% of them, you can stay up to 365. I think that's that's probably an error. That's probably, that's not what they intended. I was at the meeting, that's not what they intended, but that's what, that's what was put out there. One other item I want to clear up, because I'm the the cause of it, is I stated at the plant or at the public hearing that there would not be sales tax income generated from this proposal. That was in error. I was digging through Arkansas Code in the middle of a planning hearing, and I misinterpreted the code. I've since reread it, called the state, and I've called other RV parks. There will be sales tax collected for every site there. One other item of concern is will they be on septic tanks? There's never been any discussion of this going on a septic tank. This will tie into the West Fork sewer system. It will not have separate taps. It will all go into one tap, but the sewer will be collected onsite. It's not going to cause a environmental hazard from a sewer aspect, okay? It would be no different than if there were homes there, other than the homes would be on individual taps. Okay. So that's what I wanted to clear up. Clear the air, let everybody know we discussed it. I'm going to welcome the Berry's to come and and share with us any changes that have happened with the proposal or anything they want to make relevant. Again, if you have questions, ask the council and let us ask the Berry's. That's been part of the issue with with the planning hearings. There, there's been back and forth in the audience, and the planning commission can't keep up to take notes on all of it, okay? So keep your discussions through us, uh, and and let's, let's get through them, let's get a vote and and see where we're at on this, all right? Talk to me about the code. All right. Dawn, Michelle?
Thank you. So I just want to start by saying thank you to all the the council members. I know you're here regardless, but we appreciate your time and and hearing us out through this and hearing all the community as well. I also want to thank everyone that's, you know, had comments for us or against us. That's great. We're glad to hear them. I think one of the things I don't want to talk a whole lot about, the actual business plan part, I think that's been discussed quite a bit. What I do want to say, though, is we hear your concerns. We understand them, and we are trying our best to think about ways to also adapt and make sure that we are conscious of those. I think a few of those have been handled through the conditions that are are placed on us. We're willing, of course, to work with those. We're willing to sit down with anyone else and and discuss anything further that that needs to be. I think, you know, what I would say is from us, we're a family. It's Dawn, myself, and we have a two, almost three-year-old. We're not a big investment group. We're not part of any other RV parks. We're not part of any other things like that. It's a family. We're looking at this for an investment opportunity for our family, not so we can get rich, so that he can kind of slow down and we can have Saturdays together, so that we can spend more family time together. And that's the real motivation for us. We love the property. We love West Fork. We're looking forward to being a part of this, if if you'll allow us to be your neighbors, excuse me, to be your neighbors. I think we would be great neighbors. I know that's hard when you don't know us personally, but I'm hoping that we get a chance to to get to know you personally. I would say that a few of the concerns that have been brought up that Dawn and I have discussed, I think, you know, I will just say this out loud, that I think some of those are going to be there, whether it's a subdivision, whether it's apartments, whether it's who knows what else comes in after us if we aren't approved. So I would say that a few of those, just keep in mind, I think they're going to be be those issues regardless. The other ones, I think, again, we're willing to work with with you all. We're willing to kind of hear thoughts and and do what we can. So all the conditions that are set there currently, and, you know, as the process goes through, if we are approved, we're willing to still sit down with neighbors and sit down with the community members and and figure out what makes sense. The other thing I'll push is, in terms of infrastructure, in terms of actual development, an RV park is pretty minimal. There's not any huge structures going in. There's not buildings, there's not things like that. So 10 years down the road, if it makes sense for this to be something else, it's a pretty easy changeover. There's not a lot of things that are real permanent when you think about the RV park. There are, of course, utilities, but those can easily be converted to commercial, residential, whatever, somewhere down the road. And that was part of the appeal for us. And, you know, and I think, just to second some of the conditions, we certainly don't want to go to Riverside Park and see RVs either. That's not what we're after. We like going to Riverside Park and seeing the beautiful trees and and the cliffs or the bluff. And so I think, you know, again, those things, we're, just to kind of reassure you all, we're going to do our part to try to make sure that those are maintained and that those conditions are upheld. So with that, I will kind of pass it on, and I think if there's any other questions, we're happy to.
Yeah, so hang hang tight, and let's let the council, if the council has any questions for you, let's let the council ask you any questions they might have.
Just to clarify something that was on Facebook, you do not own any of the RV parks anywhere?
No, sir, we do not. We don't have that kind of money, unfortunately.
Any other questions for Michelle? Okay, thank you, Michelle. All right. Citizens, who would like to go first? I'm going to limit you to two minutes, okay? There's, there's one of them, and there's many of you guys, right? So talk fast.
Tell me when the timer starts.
Go ahead.
All right, so I'm Joshua Good. I don't know if you guys know me or not. My interest in this whole thing started as I started watching the West Fork littler everything post. I grew up here in West Fork. I am one of the few people that I can actually say I was born here, right over on Merrill Springs. I've lived here for 32 years of my life. My unique interest in this was that my wife and I just currently got an RV ourselves. We started traveling around the United States and realized as a family that this can be such a destination for families. We love West Fork. A lot of people here in West Fork, I feel like, have the mentality of, let's keep West Fork ours. I would disagree with that. I love West Fork, and I want to keep it the way it is, but at the same time, I also want to share the beauty of West Fork with the outside community. Not from a revenue perspective, not from a, uh, something that I gain. I gain nothing, and I've I've told a few of the council members tonight, I gain nothing for coming and voicing my view for this. It's just simply the fact that that I feel like, especially in the world that we're in today, it seems like so many people are so, you know, self-consumed of what I get out of this. I think that I'd like to thank the council members for, you know, hearing out all of the concerns that people have. I'm sure that there's been a lot of emails on that side of things, Mayor Cottle as well. And then, most importantly, the Berry's, for looking at West Fork, seeing the community that we have and and wanting to share in that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions for Josh?
Thank you, Josh.
I don't think we can ask any questions.
Well, we might have some.
Sure.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
I'm John Kennedy. I live by Riverside Park. If there is an ordinance against trailers, then why is this issue even being addressed, for one? If the ordinance is not going to be changed and this goes through, then we, the city is virtually giving them a monopoly on trailers in West Fork. Any other businesses in West Fork have that privilege? And how do you get to be special enough to to get that from the city?
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else? You live in the city, sir?
No. I'm Bill May, and I, uh, my property joins that place, and I think Merrill Springs might be a good place for that trailer park.
Can't hear you, guy.
It's all right, Councilman.
Um, now, I've lived here 30 years. I love driving underneath that Campbell Loop overpass every day, coming down that hill, looking into West Fork. It's my favorite thing to see every day. I just think there's better locations for a park like this.
Okay.
I, you know, I keep hearing about the RV park in Greenland. That's Greenland. Put one on the interstate, but not right in the middle of town. I'm sure you all are nice people, but it's not the place for it, not near the park, not near my house.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'll give it up.
Okay? Have you got something new for us?
I think so.
Okay.
I don't know what you've thought of. And I'll be honest, I wasn't at the planning meetings, and I'll be more honest, I don't know the, uh, about the ordinance, okay? But I do have some concerns.
We'll give you two minutes, okay?
I am concerned about people who will come into the RV park for special events, like bikes, blues, and barbecue. I have visions of all these motorcycles and the noise and so forth. I don't know if there's going to be any control over, you know, who comes into the RV park. I mean, I don't imagine you can refuse people. You have to let people come in, whether it's for the football games, baseball games, you know, our university is doing so well in their sports these days that you've got more people coming in. So that's one aspect that I don't know if anyone's thought of. The other one is, if they have the pedestrian way in Church Street, people will come into the park. The last couple of years with the virus and everything has been pretty good to us. We haven't had, you know, the usual crowds that we've had, but I see that changing. People will be coming back. And I'm concerned about the money that West Fork spends in the trash pickup. Those Mondays I've walked there, all those overflowing trash cans that Chad can attest to, I'm sure. And the other thing is, we have rules in the park, but we don't often back up those rules. I don't see them being enforced. Do we have enough money through the police department to come and enforce those rules? I mean, once the genie's out of the bottle, that'd be hard to put it back, so those are my concerns. I'm not against the park at all, but I want to know what controls are going to be in place, okay?
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Pat Connor, and I live up on the bluff, and Bill's my next-door neighbor. He's an excellent neighbor, by the way. First of all, I think I wanted to just start with, I have a copy of the draft of the zoning code update that the planning commission's been apparently working on this for a couple of years, but I just wanted to point out the mission of it. To develop a zoning code which respects the city's small-town attributes and unique characteristics while allowing the city to facilitate thoughtful, safe, and sustainable growth. The zoning code shall encourage and manage appropriate development, recreational areas and, excuse me, infrastructure, while also improving the quality of life and providing a welcoming environment for all residences and businesses, when their first goal is preserve the small-town feel of West Fork while integrating the historic core landscape and the river into the future fabric of development. And I just think we should all think about, would this fit with what our, what they, the new thing they have put out? And I want to thank the mayor and the city council for your service to the community and taking time from your personal lives to address this matter. Thirty-five property owners received registered letters 12 days before the public hearing. All 35 property owners oppose the RV campground. To me, that speaks volumes, and it definitely should speak strongly to our elected council members and mayor, not to mention the nearly 200 signatures from a petition objecting to this, and I'll give this.
I have a copy of it.
Okay, well, this has additional, 50 additional signatures.
We're starting to run out of time, Ms. Blackman.
The planning committee included conditions with their approval of a conditional use permit. These conditions, with the exception of one, are weak and not specific. They leave a great deal of opportunity for interruption, interpretation, and there were many things that were discussed that were not addressed in the final concerns, condition. If these concerns are not addressed in writing, they have no merit. And I want to thank the mayor and the city council members that, that as elected officials by the citizens of West Fork for giving the serious concerns of the constituents careful thought and knowing that their votes and actions on this will have long-term effects on the future growth and representation of this community. This is a wonderful opportunity for the council to make a decision that will show intentional and responsible growth for a sustainable community.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you so very much, and I want to say right away, thank you for serving in our community. We know full well the acts of service that you do with my husband May and on the city council and mayor for 27 years, have covered a lot of territory. So thank you, thank you, and thank you. I am, like some of these, concerned about the RV park. I did not go to the public hearing. I did not know about it. I believe we were out of town at that time, probably RV. We have an RV, we have had an RV of some sort for over 50 years. That tells my age, right? We have been north, south, east, and west. We have been on the coast, by rivers, by waterfalls, whatever. I love water. That's the best place to camp. However, I do have a concern. You see that suspension bridge there? We didn't move here in 1910. We weren't even thought of in 1910. However, in 1910, the river provided ice for West Fork. We had an ice house here in West Fork. People sat on the the sides of the river. They looked at the bluff. It's been there forever. It's been a place of beauty. So I have a concern, and I know they say that you will not be able to see the RVs, but I have a concern that if you're sitting in our beautiful park, that during my husband's tenure, that park came into being, and it was very costly, and it continues to cost the city continually with the upkeep and care. But it's a wonderful place, and we are known for the river, for the bluffs, and for our park. That is what we know, we are known for here in West Fork. So my concern is, right now, it's a new park. All new parks are wonderful. We've been in private parks, state parks, national parks, but private parks, they're very hard to to keep up. Go to a park that's 10 years old. Go to a park that's 15 years old, 20. They are not the same. 20% of the park that people can stay there, 20% of the people can stay there 365 days of the year and not leave, that's a long time. 20% is a large amount. So I realize my time is probably up, but I do want to tell you, thank you. Thank you for listening, not only to my concerns, but others' concerns. And remember, what would you do if this was next door to your house? Would you want to live next door to an RV park? I would not, and I love to RV. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackman. So I'm glad you brought your husband up. He's he's appointed of contention tonight. Mayor Blackman, you're the one that actually voted in ordinance 328. You sign, you sign that, sir. Again, I would remind everyone, ordinance 328 has yet to be discussed, and that is what we actually vote on, is ordinance 328, all right? So let's do this. Let's do a show of hands. How many here are for the RV park? Okay, how many here are against the RV park? Okay. So is there anyone here that's against the RV park that would like to discuss the ordinance tonight? Yes, ma'am, please.
I'm not specifically addressing three twenty-eight, but I have read through the entire ordinances.
How long did that take you, Stephanie?
Two weeks, considering that I have not been participating in city government ever in my career. I have a different scope of career, so.
So if you'll stay on the ordinance, I'll give you a little extra time, but.
Okay. Thank you. So my name is Stephanie Reynolds, and I've lived in West Fork for thirty-two years. I'm a graduate of West Fork High School, and I grew up and am on the beneficiary deed of an adjacent property to the proposed RV park. I'm opposed to this RV park. The ordinances that I would like to point out are, as far as the condition for the maximum length of stay, I just want to ask, is this a campground for tourists? Or is it an RV trailer park providing semi-permanent residence for people in their camping trailers? The city ordinance does state that a manufactured home includes parked trailers, travel trailers, and other similar vehicles placed on a site for greater than one hundred and eighty days. The planning commission's condition even uses the term "long-term rental" when the city defines an RV as intended for camping, travel, or recreational purposes and not for extended occupancy. So as a reference, double-stim and other Arkansas State Campgrounds limit stays to fourteen days and no return until the following month. The way the ordinance reads right now, there's nothing that will prevent those people that have been there for three hundred and sixty-four or three hundred and sixty-five days to leave on day three sixty-six and move back in on day three sixty-seven. The, in Title fourteen and fifteen of the city ordinances, it talks about their purposes to, I quote, "protect and provide for the public safety and general welfare of the city, to provide for privacy and prevent overcrowding, and to protect adjacent property." This is under variances in Title fourteen. My understanding is, is that it is the planning commission and city council's responsibilities to ensure these things are upheld. I ask you all to please consider how these conditions protect the surrounding neighbors or the river, park, and scenic byway and overlay districts. In my opinion, they do not adequately do so. Another section of the ordinances that I found that I feel is relevant to this is the scenic highway and state overlay district ordinances. I have a major concern about what the impact is on this scenic highway and state overlay districts. In Title fourteen, Section eleven of this city ordinance, it states that we are to protect and enhance the designated scenic byways for providing for non-residential developments which will preserve and enhance the natural, rural, and open character of the byways and of State Highway one seventy, which we all know is Main Street. It also states to address aesthetic and environmental concerns, which include but are not limited to soil erosion, vegetation preservation and provision, visual enhancement, and drainage. It concerns me that we have not been presented with more specific detailed plan that has been updated since the initial presentation that addresses not only this concern, but all of the other concerns. Do we really want a large-scale development along the bluff, Main Street, and our scenic byways, particularly a semi-permanent RV trailer park? This will be visible from seventy-one south as you enter and leave West Fork, as well as from Main Street going both directions, across the bridge, and as you enter on Main Street off seventy-one. Just look off to your left, right? As you pass the two little rock houses before you get to Bill's house, we'll see RVs right there. So it's not just from the riverside. The other ordinance that I would like to bring up that I found is the watershed management and environmental impact ordinances that are in the building codes in the ordinances, Title eleven, Buildings and Constructions. So this ordinance discusses protecting historical scenic and natural beauty area, protecting wetlands and stream corridors, developing attractive residential, institutional, and industrial areas, water supply protection source, buffer zones along critical border areas. It states the preservation of the above areas will enhance the environmental quality of the community. Organizations have stated that the high-density development like this in this particular location will have a negative environmental and social impact upon the city of West Fork and the White River watershed. I am not opposed to growth, but I am, and I am not opposed to RV parks. I'm opposed to an RV park in this particular location. I have worked in Bentonville, Arkansas for almost twenty years, and aside from four other, four years of that, I have chosen to live in West Fork, not because it's convenient, but because this is my home and I love this community. What we do along the river and the bluff will be there. I can move, but the city of West Fork can't. We, as a community, are responsible for ensuring responsible and sustainable growth that is planned and intentional with the right types of growth in the right locations. West Fork doesn't have to be desperate for growth and take whatever comes wherever it is proposed. We can afford to be intentional and planned in our development to ensure the city grows into the type of city we would all love and be proud of in fifty years. So will our children want to live here? Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have printed-out copies for everyone of the ordinances that I found relevant.
All right, so that was a pretty good presentation that, thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Mike Henderson. I moved here two and a half years ago with my young family. I sent all of you a letter today. I've been to the act of, I'll try to just emphasize some things.
Okay.
That are, that maybe haven't been said. As far as the five conditions, one of my big concerns is the environmental damage. I spent all day Friday on the phone with folks at the Army Corps of Engineers, at the Land Commission, game and fish, Beaver Water District. There is no protection for the affluent right now. And there is no device, if this proposal is put through as is, for anyone that I've talked to at the state or federal level to, to stop that until there's damage that occurs. Talked to four different folks at the Corps of Engineers and, and Land Commission and all. Something's got to happen. The other thing that's not in the conditions is onsite management. How are we going to force all this? Even the second condition with Church Street, it's going to get used. There's not going to be any, anybody there. So we're relying on local residents to call the police who are already overworked, already doing important work. So that's missing. As far as the one-year residency, we're essentially inviting non-addressed residents to move into our community throughout two years. And as Stephanie said, that could flip over, right? We don't know who's moving into the community. Somebody moves into a neighborhood, there's a sex offender registry. We don't have that. We're giving all of that up. So we don't know which folks are moving into the community. Again, any of those sorts of issues that come up, it's going to fall on our police department. Everything that we can do is neighbors in this community or as people concerned about the environment, it's going to be reactive to damage that occurs. The last thing I'll say, and this isn't necessarily in the code, but we're all talking about those last two protections with, you know, you know, preserving the natural beauty. I live right up on that bluff, two units away, south of the, between Carrie's old place and Mike. And this time of year, once the full summer foliage is gone, I can see straight through both sides. I can hear everything that happens at the park, not just from the dead of winter, right? But right now, a month ago, I can hear the dogs barking down at the park. I can hear everything, a couple lots over. I can see my lights from my back porch from the park. I can see all the lights in the park. So, you know, I, I don't think that's really been considered, like what it looks like and what this is going to look like up on the hill. All of our properties are set way back from the bluff.
Okay.
That's intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Will you be addressing the code or addressing something that's already been talked about or something new for us?
I'm actually wanting to address the council. I have a question. How many of y'all have went to any of the adjacent property owners to look out to see how exactly it's going to affect? Because I know Mrs. Connor sent an email. I know you responded. And I know you went and looked at the property yourself, but my question is, you didn't?
I didn't go to her house to see it. I went from seventy-one business.
I was out there this afternoon.
Okay.
So some of y'all have, some haven't. You know, this, it's going to affect the neighbors, you know? Because even if you grow the buffer zone, it's going to take years. These people are going to have to look at this. They're going to have to hear the noise. It's, it's not going to be harmonious. You know, I have nothing against RVs. I own one, you know? I go camping, I RV for probably fourteen, fifteen years. And there was enough buffer zone, you know, which twenty-five feet. Let's be honest, that, that isn't enough. You know, we can take the example from Hog Valley. Hog Valley, there's nobody living close enough there to affect. But our residents who live there are going to be affected. And that's, that's what we need to really consider more than anything else. I serve on the planning commission. So, and I do it because, you know, I want to look out for the people, all the people who live here. You know, those are the people I have to answer to.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. So we've, we've heard a lot, guys. We did a show of hands, people that didn't want this. Again, I'll go back to where I started. Somebody point to something in this, okay? Because like, like I told you guys, we're, you didn't elect us to vote on our likes and dislikes. I voted against stuff I wanted. I voted for stuff that I didn't. If we're going to get out of, I mean, what are, what are we asking for here? We're, we're asking, we're asking the council, guys, we don't like this, vote against it, right? And I'm fine with you asking that, but we're, we're two minutes out of time. I don't want this, I don't want this. Somebody point to something in here to tell me why we shouldn't vote to it, okay? Hang on, Stephanie. Is, is there, sir? And, and we're going to talk about some of that in a minute, but.
That's all I'm asking. Is there an ordinance against trailer?
We, we have some verbiage against RV parks. Yes, we do.
Okay, so why is this even being considered?
Sir, we, we have a process to consider everything that comes into town, okay? Otherwise, you don't want the council telling people yes and no without fair consideration. That would be wrong as well. Virgil, what did you have for us, sir? Something new, I hope.
One thing I'd like to discuss, I was over there this, this week, and the location is the issue that I'm concerned with. There's traffic coming from the south, is that, no.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Traffic coming from the south, and both are coming uphill. I'm thinking about the safety aspect of trailers pulling out of the RV park onto the right-of-way. Trailers turning into the RV park. It's quite pronounced now, but I'm sure that that would not be the issue then. But I'm thinking about the safety aspect of the rigs' traffic as well as the, as the RV owner's.
Good point, sir. Do you know how much traffic travels that road every day?
Yes, I do.
There's about nine thousand cars a day coming in and out of town right there. Just as a point of reference. Yes, ma'am, does this have to do with the code? So we're going to, we're going to talk about code.
Doesn't have to do with the code, but it has to do with one of the things, the boxes they had to check on that list of things to pass the planning committee, that it was compatible with the surrounding things. And I think we have pretty well established that it's not.
Okay, and if you, if you will.
So in that way, they passed it, even though that box was not able to be checked.
Okay. And so if the audience will allow the, the planning, or the city council to discuss this based on code, does everybody feel like they've had their say and that the council realizes where they stand on this?
Do we get to talk afterwards?
No, sir, and I haven't gave you, I tell you what, I haven't gave to out of, out of city, Paul County. I give you two minutes, sir. Two minutes, it, is it, and then we are going to discuss actual code.
I came here to discuss something entirely different, but after hearing what the folks are saying, I wonder, I speak to y'all. This RV park, if it passes, will start West Fork on a path. It's undeniable. There's a storm coming here, and it's going to be all real estate. Y'all are putting rules and regulations in place that kind of see that. This would be the first step towards West Fork getting bigger, getting larger, looking different. My question to the council is very simple. What's wrong with West Fork the way it is? We live here because we choose this lifestyle, but we have no choice. When the lifestyle changes, the town gets bigger. It makes more money. Sure, we all want that. That's what I ask you, discuss amongst yourselves. Our lifestyle is going to change here. I would talk more, but.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate it. If it's code, I'll give you two minutes, and then the council's going to discuss code, and we're moving on. This is the last of it. Come on.
One other thing, an additional use criteria is have all yard setbacks and other area requirements been met?
And on the front page of the handout I gave you, for that, for residentially zoned, it has setbacks for other uses as thirty-five feet, not twenty-five feet, which was set by the planning commission. So I would just ask you to please consider that and look at that piece. And I also would just like to ask, which code are you referring to? Yeah, can you help me?
Sure, I can help you. Title fourteen addresses every bit of this.
So the code you're asking is in Title fourteen?
Title fourteen. Let, let me, let me, let me drive for a minute. Are, are we good with, with the public comment? The, yes, sir. Two minutes.
My name is Chris Brannon. I'm friends of the family that lives here and is selling the property. We're also helping them sell the property. One thing that, I'm, I'm from a small town too. I'm, I'm from Grant, so I, I get it. One thing that, that I'm hearing is that people are talking like this is the only thing that could ever possibly happen with this land. Fayetteville keeps growing, more stuff keeps coming this way. This land's going to get sold at some point. Right now, with the current zoning, the way I understand it, somebody could come in, buy this land, put up a couple dozen rent houses, and nobody would have anything to say about it because that's in the code. They're following the rules. Nobody wants to see that. Nobody wants a couple dozen rent houses in their backyard. This, this is an opportunity for, for the city and the council to have a say into what actually takes place there. Just, just kind of wanted to throw that out, because these folks want to sell their land. They're going to sell to somebody at some point, so just, just want to throw that out.
Thank you, sir. All right. I do hope that we don't go to Facebook and say that the mayor would cut everybody off. I want to hear folks, but I, I really want to talk about the code. There's, there's a lot to talk about in the code. And, and I think the city council knows the majority of everyone here is against the project, okay? Does everybody on the council get that feeling? Okay. Are we good? Can we talk about code?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir. Is this code-related?
Somewhere in the code it is.
Make it quick, Charlie, because I'm ready to get to this.
Okay. We're going to have fifty, there's fifty spots up there. And from my understanding from the presentations, the, the water and sewers collective, in other words, the trailer, the, the people who own the RV park will pay for the water and sewer. All right? Well, are they going to pay for that at the same rate of fifty houses? I doubt it. But if, if there's, if, if this passes through and somebody stays there for a year, they're getting an awfully good deal. They're not contributing to our water and sewer. The rest of us are, because we're living every day in that. And, and, you know, we have those interests. I don't know that that's been addressed, and I don't know that they've answered that question except someplace at the, at the public meeting I talked, I heard that it was going to be, it was collective for the whole, for, for the utility.
So it is. So it will be one, one sewer tap. All of the water and sewer is going to get paid for by one unit. Will they get a break? Yeah, they'll get the same break Harps does properly because of the usage amount.
Yeah, but fifty families aren't living in Harps.
You're right, so if you wanna talk about it, I've actually consulted some of the other water companies. RV parks are one of the biggest users of water of anything out there. Hog Valley in, in Greenland uses over two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a month. That's a hundred, that's a hundred-spot RV park. This is a fifty-spot. The, the water usage, from what I've heard from other, well, from Washington Water Authority who has other RV parks, they're actually a bigger water usage than what the twenty-five houses would be. So, all right, so council, before you, I presented you with ordinance three twenty-eight. It says the traditional use criteria. Planning commission shall hear it and decide each request based on the conditions listed A through J. Particularly involving this, as with every conditional use permit, planning commission knocks off most of the administrative duties. Did they notify the proper people? Are public services adequate and available, those types of things? Typically, when it comes to us, our concern is item E. Is the proposed use compatible with the surrounding area and the planned use for that area? Okay, so if we look at Title fourteen, it clearly lays it all out for us. Title fourteen, oh-four dash, dash, oh-two. Application of zoning district regulations, part B. The use is permitted or prohibited in each zoning district. Establish the character of the zoning district and shall include, but not be limited to, those uses enumerated as being permitted or prohibited with a respective zoning district. Part C, the use proposed for a zoning district that is not explicitly permitted or prohibited within a zoning district, the planning commission shall determine whether said use is compatible. It has an example, i.e., in character with other uses in that district. And if it decides in favor of said use, it shall authorize said use to be established. The planning commission shall decide each application on its merits, taking into consideration such factors as existing uses, access, location, major streets, plans, et cetera. The planning commission may can impose conditions under which the use may be permitted to ensure compatibility. So, B and C, we have to answer that. That's, that goes back to condition E, right? That's how we get there. I've also laid out, we've, we've got our two zones that are being affected. The residential zone is half of this property. It's intended to provide for single-family residential development, public buildings, and other public uses. That's what residential was set up to, to provide. As Stephanie pointed out, in residential, other uses does have a thirty-five-foot setback as opposed to a twenty-five-foot setback. That was a good point, Stephanie. The other zone that this borders is, or that this property is, is a commercial zone. There's two commercial properties that are adjacent to this. We have a lumberyard and, and a hair salon. But our commercial characteristics are, it's intended to provide for business and services buildings, services building area, okay? So when we're, when we're looking at our conditional use, if we're trying to decide if this is a compatible use, we are told to look at, is this use in character with other uses in the district? Is it in character with the existing uses, access, location, streets, and plans in these districts that are surrounding it, right? We specifically have a definition in Title fourteen of the zoning code that says trailer camper recreational vehicle, a portable or mobile dwelling used for temporary occupancy, self-contained, intended for camping, travel, recreational purposes, and not for extended occupancy. The only place in our code that defines temporary is, is in a floodplain code that's talking about RVs and it defines it as a hundred and eighty days. Is that applicable? I don't know if it is or not. I'm simply saying that's the only place it is in our code, okay? And so we, we can see our fantastic conditional use, list of conditional uses in the back. We at least do have camping ground this time. So it matches, it is conditional in all of our zones. The question before this board is, is this use compatible in the area that it's at? That, I mean, that's essentially what we're here to decide. And so I would open, open the discussion up for the council. Is there any discussion concerning this? Any discussion concerning what, what is being proposed to us by the planning commission? Any discussion concerning what our code actually points us toward? Or any discussion about anything that, that's been brought before us tonight?
I don't think that it's compatible with the surrounding area.
Okay.
I mean, I'm like everybody else, I, I don't want it in my backyard either. And I do think that, you know, if they put houses in there, that's another thing, I guess, but I agree. You know, we don't allow trailer parks in town. And don't you have to have like an acre of land to set a trailer on?
Technically, to live in a trailer, you're supposed to have a building permit. And be building a house to live in an RV.
Okay. Well.
It's a five acre minimum for a trailer?
For a mobile home. This is an RV.
Mobile home, I know, but I'm saying-
Real quick, so, real quick, the state of Arkansas considers trailers to be pre-nineteen seventy-six vehicles, you know, built on wheels. They're not regulated in their manufacture by the federal government. After that, manufactured homes came to be. They are things that are built in a facility that is supervised or at least monitored by the federal government, built to federal standards. So every manufactured home that's built in the country has to be built to federal standards. And you'll see, there's a seal on it that says it's a manufactured home, built to those standards. And so trailers can be regulated by the city to wherever we want to regulate them. They pretty much are no longer sort of a, a residential option as far as building new trailer parks, because there aren't any new trailers. Think of it, seventy-six and back, right? Manufactured homes, on the other hand, they can be built in manufactured home parks. But every city in Arkansas has to also provide a zone where there are stick bedrooms, single-family dwellings, that can also accommodate manufactured homes. So I just wanna be careful that we don't leak an RV, which is completely different. It's not a trailer or a manufactured home, into manufactured homes or trailer regulation. That's all, so, sorry, end of lecture, but I wanted to make sure we didn't get those mixed up.
Any other thoughts, discussion?
Are we able to go over some conditions that we're concerned with?
Yes.
And change even what they brought to us?
Right, the way we have it set up in West Fork is, the, the planning commission has looked at all the work they've done, quite a bit. They have proposed that this be approved with the certain conditions, but y'all do the final vote so you can change those conditions and make conditions.
Well, I, I mean, just like you, my, the verbiage about the three hundred and sixty-five days, you know, the, or even the twenty percent, you know? If somebody's concerned about twenty percent, you know, we could go down to ten, ten percent. Could be full time, up to one year. And the others, fourteen days, which that wasn't put in. You know, I was at that meeting also, you know, so-
So, so the options we have, John, and, and, yes, we can accept the, the proposal from the planning commission as, as proposed. We can add or change conditions to that. So tho- those are both options. Or we can, we can vote to table this, we can vote to deny it, but, but those options are available. Any other thoughts from the council? Do we have any motions from the council?
So, Mayor, if you wanted to do conditions or change them, we wanna be fairly precise about our language and get that down.
Yes, we will.
So if you wanted to change the, the three sixty-five or the percentage, or have another maximum time, we wanna say what those were at this time.
Well, and tha- that's what, do we need to discuss that before we vote, or?
Yes.
You know?
You could propose one and see if-
See if there's traction.
You know, because I, I'm sure they're not wanting us to table this, you know, cause I don't know when-
I don't want us to table-
Yeah, no.
The, the county typically takes twelve to eighteen months to handle one of these.
Yes.
I hope it does not carry on like that in West Fork, although I like seeing all of you.
You know, everybody's worried about so many, so I'm, you know, I'm, ten, make it down, drop it down to ten percent. That means, you know, they could have five there for three hundred and sixty-five days.
It'd be, it'd be ten percent of, you know, yes.
So if they do forty, it'd be four.
Ten percent of the total.
I've got that condition up here.
And for the rest remaining, up to two weeks?
All right, so fourteen-day limit for ninety percent and a, and a three sixty-five-day limit for the remainder. And right now, it's got maximum length of stay, so we change that to say up to ten percent. Currently mapped RV spaces for up to one year. Those one-year max would, must not be along the bluff. Would you change that?
Do what?
The one-year max must not be along the bluff?
Yeah, no, leave that.
Leave that?
Yeah.
And then say the remaining ninety percent would be limited to fourteen days, right? Do you want to talk about, right now, we have to enforce that. Do you wanna talk about, one of the methods of enforcement would be making sure that someone can go from space one to space ten?
You know, well, one, one thing, I, I went camping down at Devil's Den. You can't stay over fourteen days.
Right.
Okay, but I was allowed to move to a different site.
Okay.
I was, you know, and that's in a state park. You just can't, you know-
Stay in that one space.
Stay in that one spot, you know, cause that, that's when you start gathering-
Yeah, okay.
Everything.
Okay.
You know, if you're made to move, you're not gonna have as much clutter, maybe.
So is that the, is that the only condition that you would like to address?
That, and what about the thirty-five feet? I think we need to address that instead of the twenty-five feet.
So that's from each other, each, each unit?
No, it's setback.
Thirty-five foot instead of twenty-five foot.
So you want around the, around the perimeter, or where do you guys want?
Yeah, that's what he's saying, that's what he's saying is around-
Thirty-five foot perimeter setback, okay.
Yeah.
So right now-
And so-
It says twenty-five, that could easily change to twen- to thirty-five, but, um, for the residential zone portion of the property?
Say that again?
Right now, it's for the residential zone portion of the property. Is that what we wanna do? We wanna change to thirty-five for the residential zone portion of the property?
I believe yes.
Okay. Our poor city clerk is having-
And so, are you-
I'll work with you, man, after this.
Are you okay with, you feel like it, it meets the uses in that district?
I do.
I agree.
You know, e- everybody's concern is that bluff, you know? My, my concern is if you put six rental houses there, permanent, you're gonna have pavement, driveways, and everything. And the water runoff's gonna be totally different than with, you know, an RV park that they're doing gravel with.
So I, I would, on, on, I would contend that, that there's probably more of a runoff problem right now that nobody seems to care about. I don't know how many of you have seen that property, but there's an abandoned house on it with trash piled head-high. There's, there's two natural runoffs that go straight to the river and then one that goes over by Bill and Ms. Connor's house. There, it's probably more of an environmental disaster now than it ever will be, no matter what goes on.
Have we addressed that with the owner of that property?
Well, sure, I mean, we can suggest a-
I mean, why have we not done something about it if it's, like you said? Why have we not done something about it, instead of waiting till now to address that?
So I think part of the reason is we had, we had no reason to be on that property until it, it came up for a public hearing, right? I mean, I would've never driven down in there prior to that, but once, once we saw that there was a public hearing, I wanted to look, see what it looked like and, um, yeah, it's, there's definitely, it's an environmental issue now.
And that needs to be addressed.
But, so my question is, and, and I'll tell you, John, when I first met with the berries, I thought this was a fan, and I still think it's a fantastic project.
Me too, and-
When I read through our code, I changed my mind and I didn't feel like, after I read through that, that it keeps in, in with the character that's currently being used in, in that residential district.
But what would?
I think, uh, permanent residences would-
Twelve rental houses?
Yeah.
And I, whenever I think about it, cause I did walk the property. I didn't go, sorry, I didn't accept your invitation, I'm sorry, but I already walked it prior to that. And so whenever I saw it, it's gorgeous. And I mean, the dilapidated buildings aside, I mean, it's, it's a pretty piece of property. And I feel like even that it's, I want growth for our city. Okay, I do, I work at the schools, you know, the school. I know that we need more families, more students, like I, I hear that, I see it, I feel it every day. And so I want growth. But the kind of growth I want is I would prefer even to have rental properties with families and children that attend our school and people that are visiting our businesses on a consistent basis and that are contributing to our city and coming to our parades and, and doing all the things and coming to our farmer's market and purchasing the vegetables that are grown here. And so when I want growth, I want permanent growth from people that are invested in our community that, that feel strongly about our community the way you all do. Because if you're just coming and going on a weekly, monthly, however often basis, you don't feel that love and devotion and connection that we all feel. So I too want growth, but when I look at this and I see, does it, is it compatible with the character of the other uses in this district? When I walk by and see the houses right next to this property, RVs, in my opinion, are not compatible with what's already there. So, um, that is my concern. Like whenever I talked to somebody that called me today, um, I told that person, like, if, when we get in a room, we're gonna have strong opinions with everybody that comes, but we can't go by opinions, you know, cause we all have strong feelings. So when I look at this, and is it compatible with what's going on in the character of that district and the character of that area, that's how I make my decision. So, yes, I want growth. So when I cast my vote, if I vote against this RV park coming in, it's not, I wanna make it clear, it's not a vote against growth. It's a vote for proper growth with people that are invested in our town. So that's my contribution, is that I feel like that's what we need to base it on.
So who's, who's to say somebody will come to the RV park and decide to move here because of the RV park?
But they're not, hopefully, ideally, according to what we're saying, they're not gonna come and move into the RV park permanently. But somebody could buy that property and live in that area if they build a house or even live in a rental property. Like, we need that in our town. I mean, I get that the nearby residents may not ideally like rental property either, but it is zoned residential. And so people can come here and live in a, in a rental property and be part of our community. So that's just my two cents, so I'm just throwing that out there.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? Any motions?
I'll make a motion to accept it with the changes that John made.
I'll second them.
Before we, before we discuss, Mayor, I just wanna make, I wanna mention those so we'll get them out once and for all. So the, the changes, and you told me that this, what you, what you meant. The changes are for number, or letter C, to alter letter C so that it reads maximum length of stay, colon, up to ten percent of currently mapped RV spaces for up to one year. Those one-year max spaces- Those one-year max space long-term rentals must not be along the bluff at Riverside Park. Uh, the remaining, uh, spaces will be limited to fourteen days.
Correct.
Okay. And then for E, it says twenty-five foot minimum setbacks. It would say thirty-five foot minimum setbacks required for residential zone portion of said property.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So we have a motion and second on the floor. Let's do a roll call on that. Misty Cottle?
Can you restate the motion, please?
So the motion is to approve the recommendation from the planning commission with the changes to conditions to read, um, only ten percent could stay for up to a year. The remaining ninety percent would only be able to stay for up to two weeks. And that it would be a thirty-five foot setback around the residential portion of the property instead of a twenty-five foot setback. Is that?
Yeah.
Got it? So, uh, we have a motion and second. Misty Cottle?
No.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
No.
Marty Lindebury?
No.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deana McKnight?
No.
Jimmy Condiv?
Yes.
Four to three.
So that's four noes to three yeses, that motion does not carry. Do we have another motion? Do we have other discussion?
I make a motion to deny.
I second.
I don't think you need to. Well, it didn't receive approval, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't need to make another vote. We started getting into a medical physical confusion because, like, are you voting to not let something exist or just so? I think basically, the vote to approve fails and so it fails.
Okay.
I think Jan was just trying to make sure that they, we weren't going to try to rehash conditions.
Right, exactly.
Like this was going to go back to the planning commission, more conditions.
I think when the mayor's, you do have three options, you can always approve, deny and refer back. But I think that when the mayor asked for another motion, there was no other motion, so.
No, we did, we did have a motion. Well, just straight up deny.
Just straight up deny, so yeah.
Okay.
I think I would consider it denied. If everyone else, that's, that's what the will of the people that voted no, yes?
Yes.
So let's just go ahead, we have a motion, we have a second to deny the permit. Misty Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
No.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
No.
Deana McKnight?
Yes.
Jimmy Condiv?
No.
Okay, that motion carries, the permit has been denied. Okay, so our next item in new business. Resolution two zero two one dash zero seven, amending the jail fee agreement with Washington County. So this agreement is a per capita fee, uh, that we pay to the jail. This started last year or year before, Kristy? That we started paying this to Washington County?
Year before.
Two years ago? So this will be the third year, and what it is, is we pay, uh, Washington County based on, uh, our population, a certain amount. Um, that allows our police department to take, uh, uh, prisoners, if you will, to the jail and, and we don't get additional fees from the jail. Any questions concerning this resolution? Do we have a motion concerning this resolution?
Can I make a motion to pass?
I second.
We have a motion and second to pass resolution two zero two one dash zero seven. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Uh, item three, cost share of our ARPA funds with Central EMS in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars. So the ARPA funds, if you will remember, last month, we, uh, allocated those ARPA funds to six projects uh, in the water and sewer department. Since that time, the Central EMS board has met, uh, all the mayors in Washington County are on that board. Central is not eligible to receive ARPA funds. Uh, and for everyone here that, um, is unaware of ARPA funds, the federal government gave each city, each county uh, seventy-seven dollars and some change for every person in the town, uh, as part of the COVID package. Okay? So, at the Central EMS meeting, Central said, hey, we're not eligible to receive that. We are asking if all of the cities and the county will give us a piece of ARPA funds so that we can do a big project. Uh, that project is, uh, Central is starting to have issues, uh, with the amount of, uh, ambulances they have. Okay, and so the way the EMS works is if all of the ambulances in Fayetteville are busy running a call, they start pulling ambulances from these smaller towns to stage so they're at an in-between, in-between position. Central would like to add two ambulances, uh, and add some power lift, uh, assist, uh, to, their, their main on-the-job injury is back injuries, lifting gurneys into the ambulances. So they are requesting ARPA funds from each city based on what we, what we pay them each year as our subsidy to, uh, to Central. Okay, so it's, it's based on that population number, and I don't remember what the exact calculation was, but it comes up to twenty-two thousand for Westport. And again, that is, uh, to add two, two new ambulances and, uh, power lift stretchers. And if you guys have any questions, Steve Harrison is here, uh, and can, can further explain that. The, uh, the mayors, uh, in the meeting, uh, the board of directors for Central EMS all voted, um, that in theory, we were behind this, uh, pending, uh, one, that our councils were on board and two, that we get, um, some, some clarification on how to administer these funds to Central EMS. And so as we've talked several times, uh, administering these funds is, you know, that's the difficult part. Uh, we have a certain timeline to spend it, but we better be careful how we, how we spend it because we'll be getting a federal audit. So pending our councils and clarification on that, yes, this is okay, and we pretty well feel it's okay, it's a matter of getting all the pieces in place so that Central is providing us with the documentation that we need to provide to the auditors. Yes, ma'am?
So we have to, uh, I mean, this amount goes to them, but do we have to, you know, put stipulation on it that it is for ambulance? Is that what you're saying?
So there's.
Because you're confusing me, you said they weren't, they couldn't get it, and then we're still looking at giving it to us.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's a good question, Jan. Only municipalities were qualified to receive the funds initially, okay? Municipalities can give the funds to third-party organizations. There are stipulations on, on how that works and what the reporting requirements are.
Right.
Yeah, so, so yes, we feel, we feel that it is legal to give them the money.
Okay.
It's just a matter of getting the checks and balances in place to make sure that everything is, is accounted for.
Mr. Mayor?
I just wondered how we were going to give it to them when you said they couldn't.
I'd like to point out something that, uh, West Fork Fire Department calls this last month, thirty-five of the sixty-one calls for medical. So that's over half.
Absolutely.
And that's not, I mean, that's not including a couple of the other medicals that are line itemed out of that.
I agree.
So as far as ARPA funds, we're geared, uh, we have the money out of that conference still?
So, good question.
I know we spent a chunk.
So we allocated two hundred and forty-nine thousand of our roughly two hundred and seventy-five thousand funds. We allocated those to six, um, to five sewer repair projects and to the purchase of five hundred digital water meters. We had remaining funds of twenty-four thousand dollars left over. So out of that, uh, Central is asking for twenty-two thousand. So yes, we have, uh, remaining funds for that allocation without touching prior approved, uh, allocated funds.
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
So we have a motion and second, uh, that the council does approve, uh, giving this money to Central EMS based on clarification that everything else is in place. Can we, can we live with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And so we, we have Kristy looking into this, um, Central's looking into it, uh, the Fayetteville, uh, uh, financial advisor is looking into it. All of the, the, the towns' financial directors are looking at this as well, so everybody, uh, Fayetteville was actually calling the state to get some clarification from the state. So, um, all of the different agencies are, they're all in the same boat, they want to do it, they just want to make sure everything is, is taken care of properly, so.
Well, they do an awesome job and all of the cities should help them when they can.
Absolutely, absolutely. Could not agree more.
Might be able to clear up a little bit, uh, just as a statement, so, um, as you guys, Central EMS is, our real name is Washington County Regional Analyst Authority, and we are, uh, by an interlocal agreement, we are owned by every city in the county and the county property. So that's why our board is made up of every mayor. So technically, West Fork owns one point two percent of, uh, not literally, but it's, that's what the funds come out to. We broke it down by percentage of population, by the money that you guys already give to Central EMS. So legally, Central EMS is owned in portion by the city of West Fork and every other city in there. We're not necessarily, uh, a third-party vendor. We are a, uh, authority that is owned and operated by the cities. So therefore, uh, we are considered by the IRS a governmental agency. So if that helps with, uh, I thought that might help with Kristy's, uh, research. Because we are not a private entity. Considered by the IRS as a governmental agency through an interlocal agreement. We're owned and operated by every city in the county, which makes it really easy to have thirteen bosses, but, um.
Who's your favorite boss?
I'm sitting in this meeting, the, uh, but no, just, I thought maybe that might clear up a little bit of the question on how that could be done.
I was just confused with that.
No, absolutely. Trust us, they will tell you, we've been very confused in this whole thing all along. But as a, as a, not a city or county, that's why we weren't, um, we weren't eligible for any of this money.
Yep.
I mean, it has to come through you all, it can't come directly to us.
Right, okay, I got it.
Thank you. May I kind of add, I don't think, and Tom, please chime in if you feel differently, but I don't think there's any question that the money, that they're qualified for us to receive the money. What we're going to have to work on, and it can be done, um, with a lot of help, is, is how it's reported. Because for every penny that we give them, we are required to report that, how that money is spent. Just as we are required, so every invoice that we pay for digital meters or for whatever other project that we've appropriated, we have to count for every penny of how, where that money is going to and how it's spent and, and have a paper trail of where that is. Central's going to be required to document how they spend our portion of that money down to the penny to us so that we can turn around and report it. It's possible, well, every city's doing it, but that's where more of what we're going to have to get into with, um, how their reporting works than whether they're, uh, legal for us to give the money to or not, because I don't think there are any doubt that it's definitely possible for us to give the money.
All right, item four under new business.
Did we vote on that yet?
No.
Did we? Been a long meeting. All right, did we get a motion on that?
We did, I made it.
Yeah, we did.
And a second?
In a second, yes.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, I already had a check mark that we've. Item four of new business, discussion to reallocate ARPA funds for premium pay. So, uh, every city received ARPA funds, um, West Fork allocated all of our ARPA funds, other than twenty-four thousand dollars, to sewer and water repair projects.
We just spent that.
So we, so we spent the twenty-four thousand that we had ex over, leftover. It has been brought up, um, to myself and to Kristy, that other cities are offering a premium pay out of the ARPA fund to the employees. Uh, this started, uh, with the city of Farmington, uh, the city of Tawnytown followed suit really quickly. And most every other town, um, in Northwest Arkansas has done so at this point, uh, with the exception of Fayetteville. So it was, it was brought up by a council member, um, I wanted to give a proposal to the council on that, that, um, we do a premium pay allocation, uh, for every employee, uh, that was here during the period of, Kristy, the period of.
No, we have to put very specific days on it, um, and because of reporting, um, we, so we're going to have to do a resolution next month if you guys agree with all this, so we'll get the wording perfect. But basically, we're going to do for the pay periods this year, up to a cutoff date, and it'll be for so many hours. So, so four hundred, I think we're looking at four hundred and eighty hours, up to four hundred and eighty hours.
For full-time?
For full-time and two hundred and forty hours for part-time and a premium pay of three point one two five. There's, there's a story why that's the number, but.
And the story is it came out to an even number, um, of fifteen hundred dollars per employee, uh, as premium pay.
That was my next question, what was the dollar figure?
Dollar figure is fifteen hundred dollars per employee.
For full-time.
You have a total?
For full-time, uh, halftime.
Up to, assuming they worked that many hours.
Assuming they'd worked the full amount of hours in that given period. Part-time would obviously be half of that, the same thing, given that they'd worked that amount of hours. Now, uh, there's no denying, we're, we're out of, we're out of ARPA funds. To do that, we are pulling back three, uh, of those projects that we had allocated last month. With us, uh, looking at a fifteen hundred dollar premium pay amount, that is well below, um, any other city in Northwest Arkansas. John, what'd you tell me that Prairie Grove?
Prairie Grove took half of theirs, their full thing. They said, what I've heard, don't know if it's the truth, is that almost every employee is getting close to eight thousand dollars.
That's crazy.
But they ain't got a sewer project.
That's true.
You know?
They have more revenue coming in too.
Goshen.
Did twenty-five hundred.
Yes, Goshen and Greenland and Lincoln.
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred has been the, has been the, the standard that most cities are, are providing, so.
Fifteen hundred is closer to their quota.
Mayor, just to clarify, this is for every city employee?
Yes.
Okay.
Not elected.
Right, I just, I didn't know it was for just fire and just police, so it's hard to, the whole.
There is a difference.
Yes, it would be all, all city personnel.
Okay.
Can, can we make the suggestion that we do twenty-five?
So.
I mean, I, I think that if a city the size of Greenland can do it, surely we can do it.
Where we get it from?
Well, the mayor just said, what a great job everybody has done, and we have all this extra fund, so, I mean.
The federal government's only likely to say that and make their own money.
So if we, if we do, uh.
If we could.
So I, I ran this, um, uh, three different ways. I did fifteen hundred, uh, that takes away three of those sewer projects. If we do two thousand, um, it takes away a fourth one. And if we do twenty-five hundred, I think it takes out all five of the sewer projects.
Then why don't we meet in the middle and do two thousand?
Yeah.
It's my recommendation.
At least do that.
I mean, our, our city didn't shut down.
They did not.
Our guys worked.
They worked, yes, they did.
I don't deny that at all.
Yeah.
I just think that fifteen hundred is not enough, really, if we're looking at what everybody else is doing around us. And they, we have an excellent staff, and I just think, I just think that we need to, every chance we get, we need to do something to let them know how much they appreciate us.
And so I, I, I can't disagree. And so, I, I can't disagree with anything you said there. The only argument I would make toward this is everybody would like to get, I'm going to say it, a bonus.
Right.
You can't say that for ARPA purposes, but-
Right.
Essentially, that's what we're talking about. Farmington, I think, went ahead and said that. Probably get, federal government be knocking before long. Anyway, so my, my issue with this is if, if we give that pay, 1,500, 2,000, whatever it is, that's going to have, that's going to have a couple weeks of utility to it, right? There's, there's plenty of studies, management studies that show pay is a poor motivator. Everybody likes to get it, but it, but it has a, a short, short lifespan, okay? And here's my, here's my hang-up. These sewer projects, repairing this is going to last another 20 years. So, we're, we're talking about a, a nice bonus to the employees, which I'm not against at all. What I hate to see is if we give that bonus and, and that utility to the employee lasts six months and we gave up a sewer project that would have lasted for six, or 20 years. That's, that's my hang-up on this.
I would, I would like to, I mean, we're, we're, because we're going to have budget meeting coming up the 16th and we already are looking at allocating for three projects. What is this going to do? I mean, is there any way to know what this is going to do, those projects that we're looking at allocating? It seemed like that would be kind of-
We wouldn't have the funding.
Took all of them away. When we have this funding, this gift of funding.
We shouldn't have the funding and then they would be just pushed back till, till next year when we got the other half.
If you have a bad year, it'd be another year.
And then, not without whatever project that we would, we would allocate.
So, where we're currently looking on the budget, Marty, for water and sewer, for sewer, is in order for sewer to be able to pay its bonds, we are looking at putting half of our sales tax revenue into that budget because we, we don't, we're not making enough on sewer to pay the bond payment when that, now that we're having to pay those. So, we are looking at half of the sales tax revenue, which is over $300,000 going into that on top of the sewer and water revenues. So, that's, that's where that, if, if these, if these funds come out of those projects, those projects will not get taken care of in this budget here, this coming budget here. Was I pretty correct on that, Christie?
So, we're, I don't think we should pull off five of our sewer repairs. I mean-
Make sure, make sure I didn't give you any-
I agree. I think it's like 260,000, not, it's not over 300, but it's, I think it's like 260 that we've allocated to the water departments for sales tax.
Okay.
Okay, but the repairs are, the actual repairs, the digital meters, I mean, I know that's-
That's already, that's already bought.
Already spent.
Okay. So, all that's already spent, is that what you're telling me? So, none of this can be changed?
So, the only thing that being changed is item two through six.
And he's already pulled four, five, six.
Isaac, did you, I'm sure you looked at this in one more.
So, do we have money for the 1,500 without having to be-
So, if we do the 1,500, we lose three projects.
Okay. Okay, so this is-
We do 2,000, we lose four projects. We do 2,500, we lose all of them.
Okay.
And, and part of it is, we, we have 26 employees. So, 1,500 a piece, that's, that's 40 grand.
Right. Right.
And for anybody that's doing math out there, that also includes the payroll taxes. I have to be careful what I say. I guess 26 times 1,500 is not 40, but.
Right. Retirement and payroll taxes are, are included in that.
Any other discussion on that or motions?
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion if we're going to do anything with it.
I make a motion that we reallocate premium pay to 40,000, giving each employee of the city $1,500 and leaving two of our sewer repair projects.
Okay. So, up to $1,500 for full-time employees, up to 750 for part-time employees with a total, with a total project outlay of $40,000.
Why is it up to, I mean, is it not going to be a standard 1,500?
It's, so they have to, the way this is based is by hour that they work during that period. And so, if, if somebody didn't work the minimum required hours during that period, they wouldn't get the, the full amount. That's very few.
I understand.
Okay.
So, maybe this is just me. Like, I would like more information.
Okay.
And I know we've been at this meeting for a really long time, but like, I would like to know, like, what are the, like, it says sewer repair. But like, what specifically are we giving up and what impact is that going to have on our sewer and, like, I just want more information that I don't know that we're all prepared to sit here and listen to.
Isaac, do you know what 005 is? Oh, he actually has this information.
Awesome.
No, Christie has it.
And like, is there a time, like, do we have to make this decision today or can we, like, gather information and review it and then make a decision next month?
I'm sure we can.
Are they going to get their checks before Christmas?
That's a good question.
No. To me, this seems like a big decision.
Does somebody's sewer line going to break? Well, I think they've got it figured out.
Would you like Isaac to email that information?
Right? They've got it figured out how to do it.
Yes.
So, the issue would be trying to figure out if we were going to pay more because other than that, it's kind of laid out, right?
Yes.
Okay.
She would like Isaac to email that information on the other side.
So, number six is essentially on South Centennial from McKeon Roberts, south 300
feet and then up, up between two houses that will catch essentially Christie's house and then the other three houses that are right there to eliminate a pump line that's up there. Number five is four point repairs on the 12-inch off Robinson, back, back between Carter Park and the river that were identified when Wells did all that camera work down there. Main Street is the sewer line that is-
Is that number, which one is that?
That's number four.
Four, okay.
Main Street is, that's JD's. That's the sewer line replacement that goes from Church Street out towards the vet's office that is crushed and destroyed. And the third one is the sewer line replacement right here off of Dolly, going back towards the school that catches Friendship Daycare that runs along the street. Those are all really small, like 200, 200 feet plus replacements. They're not, they're not big replacements.
How much excess water we getting in from there, though?
We're getting one bit.
Which translates to a bigger treatment room. I'm not opposed to giving bonuses or whatever you call me, but, you know, we have to be realistic.
Well, I'm going to make a motion. Can we make a motion on this or do we need to?
Marty did the first one.
Oh, Marty did it. She did, that's right. So, yeah.
So, what is the motion, Marty?
To do the 1,500.
To do the 1,500.
Is that the motion, Marty?
That is.
Okay. Did we have a second? We have a second? Did you get that in?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we have a motion in second to, to move forward with the premium pay allocation of All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Can we do a roll call?
Sure. Misty Cottle?
No.
Jeff Upton?
No.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deana McKnight?
Oh, my heavens. I love our city employees. I do. I appreciate all of them.
This is a yes or no question.
This is a no. I love you and I want us to talk about, like, I just feel like, seriously, I don't like making a decision this quick on this much money. Sorry.
Jimmy Conda?
Yes.
All right. What'd you get, city attorney, kick leg?
Four to three. It went to yes.
Four to three, it passed?
Seems to be a thing going on.
Okay. What's our, what's our total number?
40,000.
No, our total number of council members?
Seven.
Is that it?
We're missing one.
Yeah. We, we vote as a majority of the whole.
Will the Deana vote?
I voted no after much speaking.
I thought we voted as a majority of the whole. Not to pass. The only things we get to vote on less than the whole, I replace a council member, of course, they're not there. And there's a couple of things that you're not allowed to vote on, like murder's clause and such.
But what about the, I mean, we just voted on a conditional use permit. It was-
We didn't get, it would have needed, yeah, it would have needed five, no matter what. So, you would need to be the, we would need a fifth vote.
For this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, what you're saying is that-
I'm considering this to be an order of the council, is what this would be. This would be a majority of the whole number.
It's not a majority of the city council?
It's, it's the whole number of city council members. So, in this, in this state, you could have a, a quorum with just four members plus the mayor, but you would still need five votes to pass anything. So, there couldn't be sort of a tyranny of a, of a smaller number.
So, we have four and three.
We have four and three. That motion did not pass.
Sorry, fellas. I cried, but.
But we already have the money for that, right?
No, we have that money going to repairs for our sewer.
We still have repairs going on. It's not like we're not doing anything. And everybody around us.
Can we get more information?
We can, we can.
Talk about this more when we have everybody here, like, maybe if we have more information.
Is that a motion?
Yes. I make a, I don't know how to word this fancy stuff, so if-
So, you mean that Isaac provided information about the city?
I mean that we just get more information, that we gather some more information and when everyone's here, maybe we revisit our votes.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Do we have a second?
But if it already failed.
Because we're missing a council member.
Okay.
So, do we have a second to that motion?
Yeah.
If we don't have, do what?
I'll second.
Okay. Well, the motion in second to-
Can you try it on?
To move this to old business at the next meeting.
So, will that actually put them on hold anyway? The repairs?
That's a good point.
Would you like to amend the motion, Deana?
Oh, my heavens.
Some of the purchases are.
And what?
Would you like to amend it to put those projects on hold until our next meeting?
Yes.
For more information?
For more information.
Marty, can you get behind that a bit?
I can. I will second that.
Okay. Can we do all in favor on this one?
No.
No? Okay. Misty Cottle?
No.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Throgmorden?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Deana McKnight?
Yes.
And Jimmy Conda?
Yes.
Okay. If that motion carries, we'll move that to old business next month. And we'll put the projects, those projects on hold, those three projects. Other business. Item one, reminder that November 16th, which is next Tuesday, we have our budget workshop in which we'll go over all the department's budgets for 2022. You calling it quits, Paula?
I think you can handle that, Marty.
So, Tuesday night, 6:30 right here, budget workshop, we'll go over the departmental budgets. Item E, mayor's comments. The Christmas parade is on this year. December 8th, they'll line up at 5:45. Parade starts at 6:30. The lineup will be, the start of it will be over by the community building, or not the community building, the activity center, thank you, by the elementary school. So, December 8th, Christmas parade.